Well, good.
Yeah, well, so.
Great. Glad to have you back.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, everybody, and welcome. We will call the order. The regular meeting of Lawrence County Board of Commissioners today is Tuesday, December 17 of 2024. Appreciate everybody being here. Ask that if you have a cell phone, that if you'd be kind enough to put it on vibrate or silent. Also note for the record, the meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. We always start the meeting with the Fledge of Allegiance, and then would ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Sanato, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Ryan, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Sanato.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Boebel.
Here. We have a quorum. We'll note that during our meeting, we always have time for public comment, both in a few moments and then prior to adjournment. If you'd like to make a public comment, you're welcome to do so both times. One of the two times, or if you're just here to listen, that's equally fine. We ask that your comments be related to county government matters, and that if you could try to limit your time to about five minutes or so, we would appreciate that courtesy. Also, we set aside time for roll officer reports and comments, but the roll officers are not required to be here, but when they're here, we always give them time for anything they'd like to talk about. And none of them are here today. That takes us to public comment. Does anybody in the room have a public comment this time? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move along to fiscal and contractual. We have received from the Tax Claim Office, two repository bids, both of which are located in the Shannick Township. When a bid is made on a parcel in repository, the bid is forwarded to the three taxing bodies. In this case, it would have been the Shannick Township School District, the Township of Shannick, and then ourselves. Apparently, we've only heard back from the Shannick Township School District, and they have given their approval to these two bids, so now it rests with us. The first bid is made by Mr. Justin Martino in the amount of $525, and this is... Bear with me just a second, please. There's a very minor correction we'll need to make on our printed agenda, very minor. The parcel number is 25-387700. Now, on the agenda, it's listed as 25387711. So please make the correction in noting that the 1 and the 1 should be a 0 and a 0. That parcel is located on Fording Road. Gentlemen, would you care to take both these at the same time as a vote? Is that okay?
It's fine.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
The second bid, also made by Mr. Justin Martino, also in the amount of $525, is again in the Shannick Township, on Shenango Road. The parcel number is 25-272200. And as we noted earlier, the Shannick Township School District has accepted both of these bids. So now it rests with us, and I'll open it up to see if you gentlemen have any questions or concerns or would care to make a motion.
My main concern is we didn't hear from the township at all.
Apparently not, since we don't have the documents in the packet.
They have 60 days to respond back. And then if they don't, then it goes forward.
My recollection is that it's being approved if we don't hear to the contrary. And this happens sometimes, as you know. You've been here a whole year, and you've seen sometimes one of the taxing bodies doesn't respond for whatever reason.
There was just one bid, Charlie.
I'm sorry.
You said there was two bids?
Two bids.
Two bids.
The same bidder and the same amount, just two different parcels.
Oh, okay. One is Fording Road, and one's on Shenango Road.
Okay, but there was only one bidder?
Yes.
Okay.
That's Mr. Martino.
I moved except the two bids.
Okay, thank you.
Would there be a second?
I'll second. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Any other concerns or discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanato.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Boebel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next in our packet, we have, as we do most every week, a set of warrant registers which are submitted to us by the County Comptroller's Office. They're a listing of all the checks that they have printed. They are dated December 9, December 11, and December 13. And Dan and Chris, I'll give you whatever time you need to look them over. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. And if not, whenever you're ready, we can take a motion back on these.
I'll make that motion.
I read it as well. I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you both, gentlemen. This is to accept the three warrant registers that have been submitted. It's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sanato.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Boebel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The minutes of last week's meeting, December 10, are in our packet. Gentlemen, take whatever time you need to look them over, and then whenever you're ready, we could take a motion to approve a minute.
Dan moved on seconded minutes.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. Any concerns about the minutes? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanato.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Boebel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. We've received a number of written communications that will enter into the record as follows. We received correspondence from the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission relative to an application by the Pennsylvania American Water Company for approval of the right to offer, render, furnish, and supply water service to the public in an additional portion of New Beaver Borough. It says here, "The requested water service territory is situated in the southeastern portion of New Beaver Borough and consists of two parcels on either side of State Route 18." And... I'm looking to see if it... It does say that the PUC did receive a letter from the county office of planning and community development indicating support for the water company's expansion in New Beaver Borough. And it also received information filed by the borough itself, the borough's Planning Commission, and the Borough Council indicating support. So this is the first document we've received. Any concerns or questions on this first matter? Hearing none. The second document comes to us from Retu Engineering Farm based in Lancaster. And this involves their writing on behalf of Columbia Gas for work that's going to be done in Slippery Rock Township. It's referred to as, project location is the Old Princeton Road. And it's referred to as the Princeton and Copper Road Project as for the replacement of several gas mains along the Old Princeton Road with maximum six-inch pipes. The existing gas main will be kept at tie-in locations to abandon in place. Project will impact one stream at one crossing location that requires registration under GP 11. Five additional stream crossings qualified for a waiver of permit requirements due to their drainage areas being well under 100 acres. And they've attached a map showing the site out of Slippery Rock Township. The third document comes from GAI Consultants. This is on behalf, and they're based in Homestead, Pennsylvania. And this is giving the County Act 146768127 notification on behalf of National Fuel Gas Supply Corporation for a project that they are undertaking in both Butler and Lawrence Counties. Says the company proposes the line N12 remedial anode project located in the counties of Lawrence and Butler. Project involves the installation of remedial anodes along the existing line from McLymon's Lane in Perry Township. They actually have a misprint in their letter. They refer to that being in Beaver County, and that's incorrect because Perry Township's in Lawrence. To Mercer Road in Slippery Rock Township, Butler County. The municipalities affected would be Perry Township and Lawrence County, and then in Butler County, the townships of Muddy Creek, Worth, and Slippery Rock. The next document we've received is also from GAI Consultants. This is on behalf of First Energy. This is giving the county notification of a general permit application. It's a 69 KV transmission line rebuild project. The project involves replacing the reconductor-ing and rebuild of approximately 18 miles of 69 KV transition line within an existing 60-foot line right-of-way. Existing roads are proposed to be utilized to the maximum extent practicable for construction of the project. Proposed access roads are expected to be temporary and return to as near existing conditions as practicable. The municipalities in Lawrence County through which this line runs includes Hickory Township, Shannick Township, the city of Newcastle, the borough of New Wilmington, Shenango Township, Taylor Township, and Wilmington Township of Lawrence County. We also have notification that the Rose Point Park Campground, located in Slippery Rock Township, has communicated with the Pennsylvania Department of Protection, the permit section Clean Water Program in DDP's Meadville Office. And this is for the sewage treatment plant at the Rose Point Park Campground, again in Slippery Rock Township. And there's an attached document from Shelley and Loy, engineers based out of Harrisburg, informing us of Rose Point Park Campground's intent to submit a Water Quality Management Part II Permit Amendment Application to the DEP. The description is, "The applicant is planning to submit a WQM Part II Permit Amendment to the DEP for modifications to the existing sanitary treatment plant. Proposed modifications include the installation of a decanter in the post-equalization tank, moving the dechlorination point, and synchronizing the treatment cycles of the three chroma flow systems to operate as a single system as opposed to their current independent operations." Get all that? Engineers would understand this.
It's recorded.
Yes, it is. Thank you. So... Those are the written documents we've received over the last couple of weeks. Would one of you, first of all, any questions about any of these gentlemen? Would one of you care to make a motion that we accept them?
I'll make that.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you both. And once again, assuming there are no questions, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanato.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Boebel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. That takes us to staff reports and then commissioner reports and comments. And Mr. Kennedy, you're first today.
I got a couple things real quick here. One thing, you and I went to Elwood on Saturday to memorial for two fallen firefighters 35 years ago. Nicely done memorial. It was cold morning, but we got through it, and the firemen down there got through it. It was a nice memorial. Sunday, we went to an Eagle Scout ceremony. It was nice and quick. That troop I know pretty well, Jack, my brother-in-law, but they did a nice job. It's really all I got.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, I agree. Both those events, we appreciate you being invited to. You and I also attended, missing down to Mr. Sanato. You're wondering, what about Chris? Mr. Sanato was out of town last week, but he's back. We also attended the monthly meeting of the County Planning Commission up in Wilmington Township. We attended the Treatment Court Graduation Ceremony up in courtroom number one. And then we were both able to attend the meeting of the Ag Preservation Board, which is also up in Wilmington Township. So they do a great job. Those folks do a great job.
Chris realizes we just didn't sit around here and do nothing.
That's right. So yeah, we had a good week. And then tomorrow, all three of us will be attending the Conservation District's annual meeting. That will be held out in Shannick Township. And what's enjoyable about that meeting is the FFA organizations, the High School Future Farmers of Amerita groups from Laurel School District, Wilmington School District, and Mohawk School District come in. In January, they go to the farm show and compete with presentations that they make. And they kind of do a test run at this meeting that we'll be attending tomorrow. So we're looking forward to that. That's all I have, and I'll see if Mr. Sanato has any.
I appreciate you guys covering those events. I know they all are very important. And I'm looking forward to... Actually, today, we got a small reception in Judge Lottow's chamber. He's going to be leaving us in a couple of weeks. It was truly an honor for me to serve with him this past year. I've known Judge Lottow for 30 years, and he's done a great job up here as the senior judge. I look forward to stopping there. Chairman, you mentioned the program we're going to tomorrow. That's always been so vital, and we've been very fortunate in Lawrence County. Many of these students have won awards over the years. Laurel and Mohawk and Wilmington, they always compete well. We should be very proud of all of them. So I look forward to seeing what they're going to be showing again this year in Harrisburg. So that's always a nice event. That was a little bit earlier than usual, right? That's always something I've always looked forward to seeing. When I was at the house, I used to try to go out and see them and catch them down in Harrisburg, but I look forward to seeing them this year. So that's really all I have.
Thank you so much, Chris, and we do welcome you back. We'll note some note that even though he was out of town, he did participate in last Tuesday's meeting, and that's reflected in the minutes. So we appreciate your taking the time to do that. We have some new resolutions to consider. And the first one, the first two actually come from our planning office. Oh, no, Rebecca Schaefer is here from the planning office. Good morning and welcome. What number do we give the first one?
379.
Number 379. And this involves the Community Development Block Grant Program. You may recall, a couple of weeks ago, we opened some bids, if I recall correctly, for a curb ramp improvement project in the borough of Elwood City. And you have some proposals for us, or some recommendations for us as it relates to that. So we'll turn it over to you, Rebecca.
Sure. So we've had a few weeks to talk about the engineers and also the borough officials as to where we're willing to go. And they are pleased with the bid that was submitted by Friar Excavating. It includes 19 curb ramps. This is like phase one. There's been phase two, so 2023, we'll finish it up. This is the first part. So we want to move forward with awarding this project this year and knowing that it won't be till springtime that we get started on this itself. So with your blessing, good to go.
My recollection is we had, did we have two bids that day? Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, before, you know, the other one was over budget. Not that it wasn't reputable, but, you know, we did both. We actually talked with the engineer several times, and he thought it was cost reasonableness for what we have.
So we're looking at the lowest responsible bidder. That's noted in the proposed resolution. Friar Excavating of Beaver Falls has been determined to be the lowest responsible bidder. Their bid was $88,426.11. Let me see if Commissioner Kennedy has any questions.
No, I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sanato, any questions for the resolution?
Straightforward.
Thank you. Could I have then a motion, please, on this recommendation?
I'll make that.
I'll second.
Thank you both. This is for Resolution 379. Assuming there are no other questions, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sanato.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Boebel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then Resolution 380, we're still talking... Oh!
We're switching.
You guys are teaming us. It's great. Amy McKinney is our director, and this is still Community Development Block Grant. At this time, we're talking about, you know, Shenango Township. And from what I'm reading here, they're asking for us to change the allocation, not the dollar amount, but where it's going.
Correct.
Am I reading that correctly? Within the township of Shenango. So I'll turn it over to you, Amy, if you could explain it to us, please.
So in CDP terms, this is called a modification. We are creating an activity that did not, we did not apply for when we submitted our fiscal year 2022 application. They originally had put in funds, their funds, for $109,994 to do handicap accessibility at the Borough of the Township Building. And they decided not to do that. They're looking long-term, and there's some other things they want to do. So instead of using those funds for the handicap accessibility at the Township Building, they are going to allocate it to the Shenango Township Park projects that they've been working on. So we had to create, do a modification. We had to have a public hearing. We had to help the public. We advertised for the public hearing on December 2. We had a public hearing on December 12. We had nobody from the public attended. We advertised it in the Newcastle News, both in German and in English. We go sit in at the local places where we always use the Township Building here, on Facebook page. And then once you guys approve the resolution, we'll submit it to DCD for their approval for the other required documentation that they need.
Thank you for that. And obviously, as we've explained before, our planning office handles the administrative responsibilities for the Community Development Program in Union Township, Shenango Township, and the borough of Elwood City. But it's those local municipal officials who make the determination as to where they'd like those dollars.
Yep, we are doing this based on their request from the townships and municipal partners.
Now, during this process, before we take our vote today, has this been, for lack of a better term, run up the fly pole? Do the folks over us, above us, either the state or feds, do they say, yeah, that's okay?
Well, they also, what happens is we'll submit the packet for them to get the final approval, but the funds that we're, the project that we're moving the funds to, the Shannick Township Park, is the project that they were approved for in our fiscal 2023 application. And we also submitted it again for our fiscal year 2024. So we, they've already approved the project in our fiscal year 2023. So I don't see it being an issue because it's, you know, just adding funds to the project, to the already existing project, so.
Makes sense to me. And then my final question would be, at some point then, did the Board of Supervisors in Shenango at a public meeting, to your knowledge, take a vote?
They don't have to.
They don't have to, okay.
Because the contract is with the county and DCD.
I see.
Everything falls to the county law.
Okay.
But of course, they were the ones that requested it.
They requested it, so it's coming from them.
Yes.
But we have to take the formal action based upon their request.
Right.
Thank you for all of that. Commissioner Sanato, any questions?
Yep, there's no county law.
No, this is all CD.
Okay.
Yep. All right, thank you.
That's it, Chris?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy, any questions?
I have one.
Okay, thank you, sir. This is Proposed Resolution 380. Would one of you care to make a motion for it, please?
I'll make that.
I'll second.
Thank you both. And if there are no other questions, we'll ask Ryan to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanato.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Boebel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Can you stay for a second? Because further down, and to the other two gentlemen, can you bear with us a minute? If you drop down to item 5, under the heading of Boards, we have in front of us a Proposed Resolution Regarding the Public Participation Panel and through the Southwest Pennsylvania Commission. But your office has played a role in this, so which would... And I know we're jumping around here. How would you want us to number this? Do you want it to be 381, or do you want it to be 383? It should be 383 then, assuming Chris and Dan are okay with our doing this. Okay, so we're going to look at Proposed Resolution 383. And Amy, can you give us some background on what we're doing here?
Yep. So the county belongs to SPC, Southwest Pennsylvania Commission, which is our NVO, our political planning organization. Our, the main role we play with SPC, though, is in regards to ten dot. We are located in District 11, which falls under SPC's planning for federal highway. One of the requirements from federal highway is, you know, obviously, public participation and community involvement. So SPC is required to work with the counties to select members to Public Participation Panel, or otherwise known as EPP. It's a two-year term, and it's members of the county that, you know, make up the general population. There, the 18 people listed on here, some of them have already been on the Public Participation Panel. There are some new people that, you know, we've reached out to. Everybody's agreed to remain on and/or be appointed. That's the list we have. There's 18 of them. They usually meet two or three times a year. They're very instrumental in helping us develop the transportation improvement plan and the long-range plan that we work with SPC and our ten local districts to build, so.
Appreciate you giving us that information. I know that as a Board of Commissioners, we're invited to those meetings.
Yes.
But we're not members of the panel.
No, we are not members of the panel. We are considered staff. Referee Commissioners, Joe, myself, Rebecca in my office, and then our District 11 representatives in our local maintenance office. They're listed on there under our Public Participation Panel, but we're identified as staff, so.
Understood. And we should note that these folks are not compensated for this work. Volunteer on their part. Let me quickly enter their names into the record. You might be able to help me on a couple of things here. As they're listed here, David Badger, who is from New Beaver Borough, Jeff Bishop from Plain Grove Township, Everett Blakeney from Wayne Township, Jonathan Bruce, who lives in Shenango Township, Leslie Butchy from the Shannick Township, Ben Bush, also from the Shannick Township, Ginny Jacob Kalella, who is with the Tourist Promotion Agency. Why do I say chief in the Shannick Township? Okay. Jennifer Elliott, who lives in Hickory Township. Susan Lautenbacher is the Director at LARP Enterprises, but I believe Susan lives over in Butler County, but she does work here.
Yes, yes, and that's fine, doesn't it?
Long as you have a presence in the county. Carol Lee Lowhead is from Walton Borough. Ryan McCandless, I believe, is from Elwood City Borough.
Yes.
Okay. Linda Nitsch lives here in the city of Newcastle. I'm not sure where Diana works.
I'm not sure where she lives, but she's with Westminster College.
Oh, okay.
She's a professor up there.
Okay. Kenny Rice lives here in the city, if I'm not mistaken. I'm pretty certain Dave Richards lives in the city. Ken Roaming, his name's misspelled on here. It should be R-O-M-I-G. And Ken lives in the borough of New Wilmington. Kevin Swager is from Elwood City Borough, and Gail Young lives here in the city of Newcastle. It's a good group of people. Commissioner Sanato, do you have any questions or concerns?
All those names I know most of, but I think I'll do a follow-up.
Thank you much. Commissioner Kennedy.
The only thing is, you're, I'm sure you're aware that this guy turned it to SPC by the 30th.
It has to be by the 30th.
Okay.
So that's why we're doing it today. So once you guys approve it, I'll send it over to Ranga.
It was brought up yesterday.
Yeah, yeah. She reached out to me last week, and I told her we were going to present it today, and I'll send it over. And I'll send it over to her, so.
Thanks again.
Great. Well, Amy, thank you very much. Gentlemen, would one of you care to make a motion for this resolution?
I vote we approve the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. This is her second. Thank you, Dan. If there are no other comments, we'll ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Sonata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Ladies, you have anything else?
Ryan, are you going to fix the spelling?
Was I right? It's Romig, isn't it? Yeah, I don't think it's mine.
Yeah, I'll run through it and fix it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Oh, great day.
Thank you, too.
We'll jump back to number three on the agenda, which would be Proposed Resolution three eighty-one. This comes to us from Children Youth Services Office. And John Bowles, the Director, is with us. And John, good morning, you're welcome. And could you fill us in on what your proposal is today?
Yes, and just a point of clarification for the resolution. I had an opportunity yesterday to speak with Solicitor Mador. And so after discussion with him, this would be a resolution not to advertise a bid, but a resolution to advertise a request for a service provider.
Okay, so we're under the fourth whereas, where it says the county will advertise ternary states for bids. Are you asking us to amend that language to say the county will advertise for?
A request for service provider.
A request for service provider. Dan or Chris, do either of you have any concerns about us modifying the resolution as such? Dan, are you okay with that? Okay. Please, continue.
So we have received an evidence-based grant as part of our state budget for this current fiscal year. It is five percent county share. Ninety-five percent of the costs are picked up by the Commonwealth. And family group decision-making is part of our plan to engage families. It is strength-based, family-centered. It's part of our ongoing efforts and really one aspect of multiple efforts to mobilize families and create a more collaborative system. Our goal is to increase participation, expand the family network, better engage families, relatives, friends in our provider community. And this is our step forward, hopefully, upon your approval, to advertise to the provider community. And then, upon receiving interest, establish a committee to make decisions in selecting the provider that will ultimately run family group decision-making.
Appreciate you giving us that information. I got a couple of quick questions, and then I'll see if my colleagues have questions as well. From the five percent requirement from the county, maybe either one of you can answer this. Either in this year's budget or next year's budget, are the funds available from budgetary scale?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. And then, have you or will you discuss this project with the folks with whom you deal in the courts?
Yes, that's already, that's already occurred. Going back about twenty-four months is when the conversation started because it was a submission in our budget almost two years ago to get to the place where we are today.
Great, thank you for that. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any questions for John? No? Mr. Sonata?
No.
Okay, thank you both, gentlemen. John, as always, we appreciate your joining us. And let me see if my colleagues would care to make a motion then.
I'll make that one.
I'll second.
Thank you both. If there are no other concerns, we can take a roll call.
Commissioner Sonata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
John, thank you much.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. We have a proposal from our Assessment Office. This is item four under New Business. This is Proposed Resolution three eighty-two. And JR Artister, our Chief Assessor, is with us. And this involves the CA MA, or I assume it's pronounced KAMA system. Can you fill us in on this, please?
Just to give a little history on it. First, we go back to two thousand thirteen when we signed a contract with the Evaluator Services and Technology for a software upgrade. Part of their contract, they have provided a website, now it's Courthouse Online. Courthouse Online is a public viewer to which all property owners were able to look at their property information. Now, a property owner will want to look at their unsolicited property free of charge by a username and password and get it printed on all of our county, all tax bills. So you can look at your property free of charge. However, if a business or someone wanted to subscribe, they could look at everyone's property at fee-based. So back in two thousand thirteen, that was the agreement the county signed with the EST. And when we did our agreement with Vision in two thousand twenty-two, they stated that they were going to offer the same service. Unfortunately, the current software, website software they're using called Vision Web, does not have the ability to create that paywall where even charged property owners to use a site or create that username and password capability to be put on tax bills. So Vision Government Solution has another product called Data Scout, to which is now going to be their ongoing web platform moving forward. So they are going to go ahead and use that software rather than Vision Web and conclude Vision Web so that we can provide the same services to our residents that they have been accustomed to over the last, I don't know, twelve years. The cost to the county is nothing. It is part of the agreement. They just wanted to make sure that the contract was right because we are changing the name from Vision Web to Data Scout Web. So it's kind of just a formality. They just wanted to make sure the contract was correct. So that's the purpose of this resolution, primarily just to change the name. I will say, the Data Scout platform is far superior than even what was previously offered with Courthouse Online. They will have an integrated website or integrated map on it with a lot of more advanced tools than a lot of the subscribers will really benefit from. So it's going to bottom you on and across to our county.
Well, JR, thank you for bringing this to us. And everything you've talked about is incorporated in the resolution. The fourth whereas says that the county will not be responsible for any additional costs or fees pursuant to the addendum. And Data Scout Web will not impact the online tax payments through Courthouse Online. We'll also note that you have reviewed all of this or discussed all of this with our county Solicitor. And I assume he's giving you the green light from his perspective.
That is correct. Just one other comment on that third whereas is the other reason for the upgrade is Vision Web did not have the ability to offer the online payments to help treasurer pound and our tax footing in order to collect payments online. That has been a vital part for some convenience of our residents. And we want to make sure we can continue that. And Data Scout Web has promised that service will still continue.
Thank you. Does Commissioner Kennedy have any questions?
No, no, no.
Thank you. How about you, Commissioner Sonata?
No.
Okay. Would one of you care to make a motion for Resolution three eighty-two?
I vote we approve Resolution three eighty-two.
I'll second.
Thank you both. And if there are no other concerns, we'll ask for I have a call to roll.
Commissioner Sonata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. Hey, JR, thank you very much.
No problem.
I'm sure we'll see you, but if not, Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you, you guys, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, JR.
Thanks, Joe.
We'll jump now to item six, which is a budget amendment. And this will be Resolution three eighty-four. I think I got it. Three eighty-four, thank you, Joe. And this is good news, particularly for Commissioner Sonata because he sits on their board. It looks as though we received through the hotel tax more than we had budgeted to the tune of twelve thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. So this resolution would increase the revenue fund account line item by that dollar amount and then apply it towards the expense line item, again, twelve thousand, eight hundred and five, which, the bulk of which will go to the tourists or the visit Lawrence County. So that will make our friends down there,
Absolutely.
Janet and Jenny very happy, so this is good news. But let me see, Commissioner Sonata, do you have any concerns or questions?
Now, this is good news. That means there's a lot more activity in Lawrence County as far as visitors coming in. I'll ask the boards to try to attract people from outside the county to come and stay here. And I think you're starting to see a lot of positive things happen, especially towards the industry of Lawrence County.
Thank you. And Mr. Kennedy, any concerns or comments?
Just tell Janet, Jenny, Merry Christmas. I'm sure they'll be happy to see that.
Yes, surely will. Well, gentlemen, would one of you care to make a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you both. And if there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Sonata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Ryan. Joe, thanks for putting all this together. We have, as we've commented the last few weeks, at the end of the year, we tend to have a higher number of administrative transfer requests. Most of them are fairly small amounts, but we still have to take formal action on them. I'm going to read them into the record. Dan and Chris, if we get to a point of a question, just stop me. We can address it. Otherwise, when we get to the end, if you want to take a blanket motion, we can do so. Or if you want to divide any of them out, we can do likewise. So here we go. The Treasurer's Office is asking for the following request for transfer, a hundred and forty-five dollars from their contingency into their maintenance and repairs and from their contracted services, also into maintenance and repairs, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. Juvenile Probation is asking for a seven hundred and fifty-dollar transfer from their materials and supplies line item into their telephone and internet line item. The Planning Office is asking for seventy-five hundred dollars from their contingency into their grants and programs line item. Under the Commissioners area, we're asking for a transfer of six hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-five cents from Staples into that of minor equipment. The Coroner is asking for a, and I believe this is five hundred. It's listed as such on the agenda, and I'm looking at what they wrote. I'm assuming that's five hundred. From their lease line item into their gasoline line item. The Controller's Office is asking for four hundred dollars to come out of their contingency into land and building slash rent. The Prophonetary is asking for the following. All of this is coming from their materials and supplies. Fifty-one hundred dollars is going into their major equipment line item. Twenty-one hundred dollars is going into their minor equipment line item. And eleven hundred dollars is going into maintenance and repairs, all within the Prophonetary's jurisdiction. The Recycling Office is asking for an eight-dollar transfer from their contingency into land and building rental. Under the Commissioners, we're looking at a request of transferring six hundred and three dollars and forty-four cents from travel and training into Staples. Mental Health and Developmental Services is requesting a sixty-seven thousand dollar transfer from MH Administrative Management into cost allocation. And I said most of these are small. This one obviously is larger, but this is typical at this time of year, if I recall correctly, right, Joe?
Absolutely. What they do over there, Commissioners, they try to, we've always done this, try to predict where the spending needs to be made or will be made. Sometimes a trend line changes slightly or another set of us were otherwise, or they just simply don't need their marketing spending. Put it elsewhere.
So this is really, it doesn't come to me as any surprise, and I don't think it comes to you as any surprise. I didn't want my two colleagues to be thrown off by that relatively high number. The Courts ask for the following. All of it is coming from their law clerk line item. Four thousand dollars into criminal background checks, a thousand dollars into association dues, nine hundred and forty dollars into telephone slash internet, and six hundred dollars into constable. Children and Youth Services is asking for the following. All of it is coming from their contracted provider care line item. Two hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-seven cents is going into electric. Seven thousand dollars is going into court-related costs and four thousand dollars into client transportation. Under the Commissioners, we're asking for a twenty-seven-dollar transfer from postage into subscriptions and books. Getting back to CYS, they're asking for a seventeen-hundred-dollar transfer from contracted provider care into their independent living line item. Maintenance is asking for the following. From their gas line item, two thousand dollars into their water line item. Also from gas, forty-two hundred dollars into electric. Under their other improvement line item, eight hundred dollars into maintenance and repairs, if I have that correct. And then, from their travel and training line item, three hundred and sixty dollars. It says on the document thirty cents, so we better make that adjustment on the agenda. Three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty cents into maintenance and repairs. From their gas line item, thirty-five hundred dollars, also into maintenance and repairs. From their employee insurance line item, twelve thousand dollars into maintenance and repairs. And then finally, from employee insurance, seven thousand dollars into materials and supplies. The Voter Services Office is asking for two transfers, both of which come from their materials and supplies line item. Hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-two cents into lease equipment and a hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-six cents into telecon. And then, under the Commissioners line item, we're looking at a request of ninety-one dollars and ninety-four cents from the miscellaneous administrative expense line item into land, building, and rental. A long list, but let me see. Dan, any of them cause any concern?
No.
Okay, thank you. And how about you, Chris?
No.
All right. That being said, Joe, anything we missed?
No.
Okay. Would one of you care to make a motion to approve these requests?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I thank you both. Take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Here are some announcements. Next Tuesday, we're closed for Christmas holidays. So consequently, the next time we will meet as a Board of Commissioners will be two weeks from today. Tuesday, December thirty-one, at ten a.m. in this room, it's open to the public. And one of the primary things that we'll undertake will be adopting the twenty-twenty-five budget. The Prison Board Meeting, which was scheduled for Wednesday, December eighteen, has been canceled. This coming Friday, the Salary Board will hold a public meeting, special public meeting on Friday, December twenty, at nine a.m. in this room. As we noted, the courthouse will be closed on December twenty-four, December twenty-five, and December twenty-six in observance of the Christmas holiday. Will also be closed on New Year's Day, January one, twenty-twenty-five. And then, state law requires that the Salary Board convene on Monday, January sixth of twenty-twenty-five for the annual Salary Board Meeting. And our first meeting as a Board of Commissioners in twenty-twenty-five right now is scheduled to be held on Tuesday, January seven, at ten a.m. in this room. Public comment, let me note to the record that we have no members of the public in attendance at this point. So at this time, I'll ask my fellow Commissioners if they have any concerns or closing remarks. And I'll start with Mr. Kennedy.
Just hard to believe we're coming up on a hearing you guys had to put up with. I feel sorry for you. But we're here. These three years is going to go quick, as far as you're aware. Been enjoyable. I've had my ups and downs, but it's really been an enjoyable job working for the people of Lawrence County and working with everybody here at Courthouse. Great group of people, as I always preach. You know, we've got a great team here.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sonata, any closing comments?
Not today.
Okay.
And I've enjoyed, and we'll talk more in two weeks, but I thoroughly enjoy working with both of you. And you're right, it's gone fast. This first year has gone fast. I think, I'm sure I speak for Chris and everybody in the room. We really hope good health all of twenty-twenty-five.
Joe keeps that operation game away from me. We'll be okay.
But I certainly appreciate the dedication you both have shown to your positions as Commissioners. And I trust you have found that, as I've said for many years,
And, uh, I, I trust you have found that, as I've said for many years, this is not, this job is never boring, and every day seems to be different. I hope you've found that in these case. Very little monotony. Ryan or Joe, anything we've forgotten, to your knowledge?
No.
Okay, well, we thank you both for putting everything together for us here. And there being no other business to be brought before the Board, could I have an adjournment motion?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second. Thank you both, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, the same sign, motion carries, this is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks.
I think in about fifteen minutes, that's why it's like eleven fifteen. Okay. That's why it's like it's, it's.